On Thursday, December the fourth, two thousand and twenty five, we are conducting a hearing in room one twenty three and virtually via Zoom and streaming live to the committee's YouTube channel, E A L Committee. We are meeting today to conduct a public hearing on two important bills. Twenty six, three, twenty six, District Employee Pay Parental Family and Medical Leave Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty five and Bill twenty six, four, two, eight, Youth Work Permit and Employment Protection Act of two thousand and twenty five. Witnesses' testimonies received will be a part of the official record. Those wishing to submit written testimony, please upload it to the D C Council's Hearing Management System, or you may email it to seal@dc council dot gov. Seal is C E A L at D C council dot gov. The record will close at five P M. on Thursday, December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five. The first bill we will discuss is twenty six dash three, twenty six, District Employee Pay Parental Family and Medical Leave Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty five. It will be followed by discussions on Bill twenty six, four, twenty eight, the Youth Work Permit and Employment Protection Act of two thousand and twenty five. The district's Employee Pay Parental Family and Medical Leave Amendment Act was first introduced by the mayor as a subtitle in the Budget Support Act of two thousand and twenty five. However, it was determined by the council that this matter was sufficiently complex to warrant consideration and review through the regular legislative process. Want to make it clear that the bill before us speaks directly to paid family leave program for district government employees. We today will not be examining paid family leave for all district workers throughout the jurisdiction. We are limited to talking about paid family leave as it affects district government employees. Within the district government, employees can access the family, the federal family medical leave program and our local district government pay program. In other words, District of Columbia government employees have two programs that they can access. Therefore, Bill twenty six, three, twenty six was introduced by Chairman Mendelson on July eleventh, two thousand and twenty five. It maintains the original language of the mayor's subtitle. Importantly, the bill does not compromise the federal law that mandates job protected leave for qualifying family and medical reasons and requires the continuation of health benefits under the same conditions as if they had not taken leave. As written, the bill would make some, as written, the bill we're going to examine today, twenty six, three, two, six, makes several changes to the District of Columbia Government Comprehensive Merit Personnel Act of nineteen seventy eight. The first is a modification to the definition of eligible employee, which would be an employee who has worked for the district government for at least a hundred and eighty days without a break in service. The current law stipulates that employees may access paid family leave upon accruing annual and sick leave, which begins when the employees are with the employees' first pay period. The bill includes notifications requirements based on foreseeable and unforeseeable leave events and requires that employees engage in good faith negotiations in the event that their leave interferes with agency operations. Additionally, this bill reduces the number of paid leave work weeks for qualifying family leave events from eight to two weeks. As is parental leave will remain the same, which is up to eight work weeks. And medical leave will also remain the same, which is up to two work weeks. This bill requires a continuation of service agreement after the use of paid leave and amends the definition of a qualifying family member by removing siblings and grandparents, thus limiting members to children, parents, spouses, and domestic partners. Next, we'll talk a minute about the Youth Work Permit and Employment Protections Act of two thousand and twenty five. This bill was introduced, I introduced it along with colleague council member Matt Fruman on October ninth, two thousand and twenty five. As introduced, it would modernize the district's child labor law by rewriting its provision in plain, clear language. Many of the changes involve removed outdated provisions such as, set rules for street trades in reference to agricultural work. Others include setting the allowable hours of employment for minors to conform with federal law and prohibiting minors from being employed during school hours. It places responsibility for implementation and enforcement with the Department of Employment Services. As the district's lead agency, D O E S is well equipped to support our youth as they enter the workforce. The proposed bill also clarifies that the Office of the Attorney General's role is to bring civil suits against employers who violate the law and adjust the penalties for violation to conform to national and regional standards. With that said, I'd like to recognize any of my colleagues. All right, we're gonna solo for a while today. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us. And with that, we will now hear from our public witnesses. I have a list that includes. All right, in person, we have Phyllis Love and Ron Hampton. Ron is here representing A A R P. Please come forward to the witness stand. Thank you. Right here. Oh, you have your testimony. Thank you. Thank you so much. Nice to see you. All right. Okay, all right. And we also for this panel have two persons who are online. Laura Fuchs, who's president of Washington Teachers Union, and Amy Dugas, who representing herself, and I see them both online. We will start with you, Ms. Love. Is Mr. Love here? Yes, all right, Ms. Love. Thank you.
Greetings, Chairwoman Bonds and members of the committee. My name is Phyllis Love, and I serve as a volunteer ward liaison with the A A R P D C State Office. As someone who's been a full-time, long-term caregiver for an elderly parent, I strongly oppose proposed cuts to paid family leave for D C government workers. I urge you to preserve the current eight-week coverage, especially for caregiving leave use. District's paid family leave program has been a lifeline for these workers, allowing them to care for seriously ill family members without sacrificing income and leaving the workforce. This benefit helps mitigate the financial strain caregivers face by providing wage support during extended absences, enabling them to return to work without economic hardship. Access to family care supported by paid leave improves health outcomes for loved ones, especially older adults. Care for elderly family members often involves managing medications, assisting with hygiene and mobility, preparing meals, and advocating for medical needs. When sick adults receive family support, their health outcomes improve significantly, and elderly individuals live longer when they have consistent care. The current eight-week coverage makes this level of support possible for district government workers. It helps families weather economic shocks caused by caregiving responsibilities. Reducing coverage to just six weeks as proposed would be devastating. Losing six weeks of paid leave means caregivers, particularly women of color, who are often the primary caregivers, will face severe financial instability. This reduction will also compromise the quality of care for elderly family members who require extended support. Paid family leave protects the health and economic well-being of workers and their families while having minimal impact on business operations. Shrinking coverage from eight to two weeks would erase these benefits and harm D C government workforce caregivers and families. I strongly urge you to maintain the eight-week coverage for job-protected paid caregiving leave and to reject the passage and implementation of punitive policies that workers, that penalizes workers instead of benefiting them. D C should lead in supporting workers and families, not punish them for fulfilling caregiving responsibilities. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hampton?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Good morning, Chairperson Bonds and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Ron Hampton, state president for the A A R P D C State Office. A A R P represents thirty-eight million members nationwide, including sixty-eight thousand district members through advocacy, outreach, and community engagement. I represent, I represent D C and also speak as a former police officer myself, who understands the demands of emergency personnel and the growing caregiving responsibilities they face. A A R P urges this committee to oppose Mayor Bowles and Chairman Mendison proposals to cut family leave under the District Employment Paid Parental and Family and Medical Leave Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty five. This bill will sharply reduce paid family and medical leave for D C government employees by cutting benefits from eight weeks to two weeks, narrowing eligibility, introducing punitive twelve-week work agreements, and imposing financial penalties for staff who depart due to caregiving, medical necessity, other purposes within the twelve-week of use and leave. These changes will deepen the hardship for caregivers, destabilize our long-term care system, undermine D C's commitment to aging in place, health equity, and workplace retention. While this matters, the rise in paid leave use is not abuse. It reflects reality. More employees are caring for aging parents, children with disabilities, loved ones with serious health needs, often with no alternatives. Reducing leave and caring or caring hours is punitive and short-sighted. One in five D C adults, which is a hundred and nine thousand residents, is a family caregiver, including many government workers. They provide sixty-nine million hours of unpaid care annually worth one point thirty-seven billion with a B and spend seventy-two thousand dollars out of their pocket each year. Thirty-one percent forty hours plus care weekly, fifty-two percent face financial strain, forty-one percent report high stress. Caregivers include nine-one-one dispatchers, first responders, teachers, social workers, frontline personnel. Families in D C are diverse and multi-generational households, grandparents raising grandchildren, siblings support siblings, choosing families, and narrowing eligibility ignores the reality. D C already faces a severe shortage in terms of direct care workers with only eleven thousand five hundred for the thirty-six thousand residents needing daily assistance. Cutting paid leave will force more caregivers out of the workforce, increase demands for services we cannot meet, drive up costs, and lead to crisis-driven institutional replacements. Reject A A R P and this member's request to follow and reject the proposed reduction in the District Employment Paid Parental Family and Medical Leave Amendment of two thousand and twenty five and preserve the support that protects our D C government workforce. Instead, focus on the systemic approaches to addressing D C direct care worker shortage and the growing caregiving crisis. This includes fully funding DACALE and other agencies that currently are on the resource caregiving support services. Update documentation and tracking system to better monitor leave usage, identify true outliers that may be misusing benefits without penalizing the vast majority of employees who use leave appropriately to care for loved ones. Thank you very much for your time and commitment to this matter, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Ms. Fuchs, we'll take your testimony now.
Great, thank you. So I'm Laura Fuchs, president of the Washington Teachers Union, and we strongly oppose any weakening of benefits for district employees across paid parental family and medical leave. Our educators and other district employees work tirelessly to serve the people of D C, and they deserve to be able to take care of their families. While the W T U works hard to negotiate strong contracts for our members, we currently do not get much leave, only twelve sick leave days per year. For families, this rarely covers what is needed when there are emergencies, doctor's appointments, weather-related school closures, and more, forcing some to go on leave without pay and having to face even greater hardships in their time of need. The W T U has negotiated a sick leave bank that can provide two hundred and forty hours or thirty additional days for those who have their own medical needs and have run out of personal leave and qualify for A D A or F M L A. But this is members donating their leave to fellow members. None of that is coming from D C P S nor imposing an additional burden paid by taxpayers. D C P S is also not known for being understanding when it comes to approving leave. If the agency is able to block members from using F M L A to care for family members because of the agency's demands, then educators will likely have to make the tough decision to quit rather than go on protected leave. This is not good for our school communities and will cause far more harm than good. My entire teaching career was at H D Woodson High School in Ward Seven. In my first few years of teaching, I was extremely hardworking, but I was still getting to know the community. In my classroom, I constantly had to ask, what, what? Because I was still adjusting to the cadence, volume, and word choice of my students. I got along with my kids and developed deep bonds, but I still had major incidents that occurred in my classroom that at the time felt out of my control. Over the years, these incidents lessened and have now dropped almost zero. In part, I became a better teacher, honing my craft, but something else was at play. When students walked into my room, over half of them already knew how to pronounce my last name since they had friends, cousins, siblings, teammates, neighbors, and acquaintances who had taken my class. I had a reputation built up with kids, and I also was able to adapt to better serve them. I say this to say that retention of employees is incredibly important to running strong schools. And if we are forcing educators to make decisions between their families and the students they teach, as painful as it is to educators, they're going to pick their family, as they should. And they shouldn't have to make that choice when we have protected leave, and they should be able to get paid during that time of need. Why do we want to hit an educator or any district employee while they're down? While they're in one of the most difficult times of their lives, likely. And choosing to kind of remove this benefit at this point in time, as was raised, it's just morally wrong. And it's not good for schools. It's not good for the other agencies that serve our members or serve our people here in D C. It's just wrong. Teacher turnover in the District of Columbia, despite messaging to the contrary, is extremely high already. This school year alone, we believe D C P S had to hire over eight hundred new educators out of six thousand. There are still over one hundred vacancies in the W T U alone, let alone for other positions serving our students. These are all district government employees, and if we remove benefits, we are going to see even higher turnover as people look to find places that will serve them and protect them. And we will see even more difficulty trying to hire to fill those vacancies than we're already seeing. If we want to attract and retain top talent, we cannot reduce this needed benefit. And I'll stay on to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we'll hear from Ms. Dunas.
Thank you.
There you go. All right.
Good morning, Chairperson Bonds. My name is Amy Dudis. I'm the senior advisor for career readiness at D C Action. D C Action convenes the Youth Economic Justice Coalition, which comprises youth development providers, research and policy partners, youth and community leaders to develop career readiness priorities that will improve economic mobility outcomes for Black and Brown youth in the district. Thank you for the committee's commitment to modernizing the youth work permit process under Bill twenty six dash four, twenty eight and to ensuring the district's child labor protections. The district's youth work permit process is an important safeguard to ensure youth ages fourteen through seventeen working in non-governmental jobs do not experience exploitation in the workplace. While our feedback on this bill does not include critical input from the current school-based permit administrators, members of our coalition have elevated their experiences with the current process and recommendations for an improved process. Specifically, some coalition members have raised challenges with the timeliness and responsiveness of the current school-based process, which includes collecting and submitting documentation from parents or caregivers and employers. Because it is not centralized, the process experienced by young job seekers, service providers, and employers varies depending on the school-based work permit points of contact. Coalition members have highlighted that relationships with these administrators are critically important to ensure permits are processed quickly and efficiently to meet employer expectations for timely onboarding. While other coalition members have had smooth experiences with this process, the inconsistency of a decentralized approach can create delays and barriers to early work experiences that we know are critical for skill building, earning income, and learning to navigate workplace expectations. Bill twenty six dash four, twenty eight shifts authority for administering, monitoring, and enforcing the district's child labor protections from the defunct Board of Education, and this is distinct from the State Board of Education, to the Department of Employment Services. Of critical importance, it also tasks the agency with establishing an online system for submitting, monitoring, and storing youth work permits. While it's logical to place responsibility for maintaining records on youth employment, providing public education on child labor laws, investigating violations, and making determinations about illegal employer abuses and associated penalties within the district's lead labor agency, we would like to raise the following considerations to ensure the agency is equipped and accountable to take on these new responsibilities. First, establish expectations for timely permit processing. Career development programs and stakeholders invest significant effort, staff time, and resources into identifying employers interested and prepared to hire youth. Employers have expectations for timely and efficient hiring processes, and if granted authority over the youth work permit process, D O E S would need to accommodate these expectations to ensure young workers are not passed over for scarce employment opportunities. Since a young job seeker cannot obtain a work permit until they have a clear commitment and job offer from their prospective employer on the work schedule and job description, D O E S would need to ensure a permitting process of one to two weeks from the point of the offer to ensure a timely start date for each youth employee. We acknowledge that this is an aggressive timeline, but believe any pivot from the current permitting system needs to improve or maintain the permitting timeline, not make it worse. We encourage the committee to inquire about the agency's anticipated processing timeline as part of today's hearing. We'd also like to ensure staff are trained and held accountable for positive and responsive communication with youth, providers, and employers. While the Department of Employment Services has the internal resources, experience, and authority to assume responsibility for this process, the agency would need to proactively prepare and establish accountability among their staff to make sure past concerns about customer service are not replicated in this new function. Whether housed within the Office of Youth Programs or the Labor Standards Bureau, clear expectations for positive and timely communication with youth, providers, and employers needs to be established to limit discouragement and disruptions before youth can start work. And then finally, we would hope that the agency can set expectations for publicly reporting child labor violations and agency enforcement. Whether in existent agency reporting through the Labor Standards Bureau or Office of Youth Programs, D O E S should establish a process for notifying the public about child labor violations, any repeat offenders, and the agency's efforts and successes in enforcing the laws. I have more in my submitted testimony, but I'll leave it there. Thanks for the opportunity to testify, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you all for your testimony. On the, I'd like to point out on the youth workforce permit, it is very important that we hear from D O E S today. We believe that we have included some of the ingredients that you have, Ms. Dunas, but I'm not sure. And so I want to make sure that we, you're correct in that we must make sure that we expedite the requests for work because it's so easy for a job to be here today and gone in a few days if we don't hear back. So we'll work on that. I appreciate hearing your concerns about how we might have a robust process for understanding the violations and then addressing them. You know, we're a government that can tell you when you're wrong, but we do not always help to fix the situation quickly. So that's very important. I appreciate that. So we will examine this, your testimony when we have the Director of Department of Employment Services on, which will be on a little later. So thank you very much. And thank you, new president of the Washington Teachers Union. Glad to see you. I really am concerned. Your contract currently contains how many days of leave for the teachers? This is the six thousand, correct, that are covered by the contract? Okay.
Yep, so we get twelve days every school year, front-loaded of sick leave. So we have sick leave that we can use, and we can, I mean, and do our members use it to take care of family members, but it's twelve days, right? And so like even just regular, and that's also for their own care, right? They get sick, and especially working with the little ones. A lot of elementary educators get sick often. So, you know, they're using it for their own care. If they have children, like even with the two-hour delay over in P G County, that did not affect D C P S, right? Some people had to use some of their leave because their kids were starting two hours later, and so they had to use leave of those twelve days. And then, you know, come to school a bit later because it was just too late notice for them to arrange, you know, alternate childcare and transportation to school. So I mean, that leave goes fast. And the only real additional benefit we have is the leave banks, and that's members donating to members. And really, that's just for F M L A and medical for their own care. So there's, there's no, paid family leave is it. That's what we got. I mean, the parental leave side, we have some extra benefits there, but when it comes to taking care of a family member, there's nothing in our contract beyond what the district government already provides. So dropping down to two weeks, I mean, that's gonna be catastrophic for educators. And like, our contract's not up for another couple of years to renegotiate, and negotiations are hard, as you know, with D C P S, the likelihood that we could make it up in our own contract negotiations and somehow win some of that back, I find to be unlikely.
All right, and so if I, what you're telling me is that a individual under your contract only has twelve sick leave days during the school year. Is that correct? Okay, for that year. All right, so they also have the opportunity to participate in our local paid family leave program for district employees. Am I correct? Or do they not? They only can participate in what is in the contract. That's what I'm trying to understand.
Well, I think we get access to this, what we're talking about right now.
Yeah.
Not, so yes, they get access to this.
Okay.
Yes. So I'm saying, right, if it goes from the eight weeks to two weeks.
Yeah.
That's a catastrophic loss when all we have are twelve days.
Okay, so you would. Okay. So you would have the twelve days plus two weeks. If, okay, I, I just want to understand what the real total number is because every union has a different, you know, contract, and I want to, my, my goal is to understand and to figure out where we're going with this. As you know, this program is dollars and cents, and that's why we're examining it. And we're not as robust of an economy as we once were ten years ago, five years ago. So we have to examine it. But I just wanted to make sure that we focus on not shortchanging any contract that we have and making sure that we do all that we can to accommodate all of our employees. As you know.
Think, you know, like, as we're thinking about, like, right, how we're trying to do that, and I understand this particular program helps people in their time of greatest need, in my opinion. Right? I would much rather, not that I love the idea, right, of cutting back on services to our educators and our students, but like, I think there's places where we can have real conversations that would save frankly more money and not on the backs of people in their greatest time of need. Like, I just, I've never personally used this benefit, and I hope never to have to. But for the members that I serve who do and who sometimes need even more, right, than what is given because things are so awful, like, it's hard for us, right? It breaks our heart when, like, we're trying to figure out methods to help them be able to take care of their families, take care of themselves, and, you know, not suddenly get kicked off their healthcare because they gotta leave. All right. Like, I mean, there's so many things that I just hope that, you know, I think we're open to under, and understanding that this is a difficult economy. But this particular program, I would love to hear how much it would save, and I bet we can find equivalent or bigger savings elsewhere that then don't impact those in their greatest time of need. And I think, like others have mentioned, there's a lot of other costs that will come in the form of teachers just saying, well, then this isn't the district for me. I can't work here because I can't not be paid, and I have to take care of my family. And we don't want that. That's bad for kids. It's bad for schools. We already have vacancies. We still have them. Those are from the summer that we couldn't fill. So, I mean, it's, I just don't want us to put ourselves in a worse position to save us what I believe is probably not, in the scheme of the whole budget, a huge bucket of money that's really there for those who need it most in one of their greatest times of need.
Thank you very much. I appreciate, you know, getting that serenity from you. That's really important because we are talking about this particular program, but we're also, you bring to the table the issue of our educators' community, and that's number one, on the scale of how do we continue to advance as a society? So thank you very much for that. Mr. Hampton, I, I see your text, and I understand where you're coming from. And as a member of AARP myself, I, I too would be concerned. So thank you very much. And we'll be examining that with the director who's sitting here. He's not yet a member of AARP, but that's okay. We'll, we'll get him there one day if he's lucky. If he's lucky.
He will.
Right. Well, and Ms. Love, thank you very much. Always. It's very nice to see you. Thank you all so very much for the first panel. All right. Okay. All right. Now we have online Mr. Joey Davis representing, representing the AFGE Local nineteen seventy-five. He's the president. Thank you for being here. And Laura Brown, who is the Executive Director of First Shift Justice Project. And we have Erin Finkenhausen, who is President of AFGE Local fourteen oh three, and Dr. Kofi Onema, who is the Vice President of AFGE Local twenty-seven twenty-five. And they are all online. So thank you all for being here. And we'll start with you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bonds. I would like to thank your colleagues, but unfortunately, they are not here at this time. Good morning, everyone. My name is Joey Davis, President of AFGE Local nineteen seventy-five, representing employees across DDOT, DPW PMA, DMV, DFHV, and MPD. Workers who show up, who serve with pride, and who truly keep DC moving every single day of the year. We are the people who hold this city together while the mayor and council hold press conferences. We are the workforce that keeps services running when leadership fails to practice oversight. And for at least four years, we have brought counsel millions of dollars in documented waste, fraud, abuse, and unnecessary spending from each agency that we represent. What did we receive? In some cases, silence. In others, polite acknowledgements and promises to follow up. But real oversight or action, accountability, none. And now, rather than confront the waste that we have exposed repeatedly, this council is considering balancing its failures on the backs of the workers who did nothing wrong. Let me be crystal clear. This bill is not about fiscal responsibility. This bill is not about fairness. This bill is not about efficiency. This bill is punishment. Punishment for being a caregiver. Punishment for having a sick child or aging parent. Punishment for needing time to handle a crisis that no one would willingly choose. This legislation slashes family leave by seventy-five percent from eight weeks to two. Chairwoman Bonds, two weeks is not leave. It is a countdown clock. It is a notice to families that their medical emergency had better fit within a fourteen-day window approved by an agency or else they're out of luck. You cannot stabilize a home in two weeks. You cannot care for a medically fragile loved one in two weeks. You cannot build a family-friendly city on twenty-five percent of the support that you previously promised. This bill effectively tells DC workers, if your family is in crisis, that is your problem, not ours. Worse, this bill adds a punitive debt trap. If an employee separates after using leave, even involuntarily, this legislation potentially allows the district to demand repayment of a hundred percent of the salary earned during that leave. Take a moment to think about who that specifically targets. Low-income workers already struggling to survive, single parents caring for small children, employees with disabilities, caregivers navigating emergencies, and workers who are pushed out due to retaliation or dysfunction. This isn't policy. This is cruelty disguised as legislation. And while the city is trying to criminalize caregiving, what continues unchecked? The waste, the spending, the unnecessary agency reorganizations, the bloated contracts, the failed systems, the mismanagement that we have continuously reported at DDOT, DPW PMA, DMV, DFHV, and MPD. Agencies at this time cannot even process basic personnel actions on time. Yet we are looking at a bill that strips benefits from workers instead of demanding accountability from agency leadership. Let's talk about women in our workforce today. Let's talk about caregivers in our workforce today. Let's talk about families with medically fragile children or elders. These families don't need two weeks. They need support. They need stability. They need a city council that recognizes humanity over a failed idea of austerity. We cannot call ourselves a progressive city while cutting family leave by seventy-five percent. We cannot call ourselves worker-friendly while threatening employees with debt for taking care of their loved ones. We cannot call ourselves fiscally responsible while ignoring the millions in waste that we have already laid at your feet. This bill doesn't protect the district. It does not strengthen the workforce. It does not improve government, and it does not save the type of money councils should be looking at saving. It breaks trust. It breaks families. And if passed, it will break the district's ability to recruit and retain the employees who make everything in this city work. So let me be direct. If any council member votes for this legislation, we will support your opponents in the next election. And if you are not up for reelection, we will support efforts to recall you. This isn't a threat. This is what accountability looks like.
Mr. Davis, I've given you a minute or so over. Thank you so very much. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Now we'll hear from Ms. Brown.
Good morning. My name is Laura Brown, and I represent First Shift Justice Project, a DC legal services organization working with pregnant and caregiving workers to support them in exercising their rights to leave from work. I testify today in opposition to B twenty-six dash three-two-six, the District Employee Paid Parental Family and Medical Leave Amendment Act of twenty twenty-five. In my understanding, this law would reduce caregiving leave for district government employees from eight weeks to two weeks, exclude grandparents and siblings from the list of family members for whom an employee can take leave to provide care, and require employees to work for twelve weeks after taking leave. It also gives an agency the right to deny leave if it interferes with operations. First Shift opposes all of these changes. I don't know the specific reasons the DC government wishes to reduce caregiving leave. Most employers restrict the use of leave because of cost, inconvenience, and concerns about abuse. This legislation will not resolve those issues. These changes are unfair, deny the lived experience of your employees, and will undermine, not improve, employee performance and productivity. In my personal experience and through the experience of First Shift's clients, I can tell you no one's signing up to care for a sick family member if it isn't necessary. When an employee needs time off for caregiving, it's usually because there's no suitable outside help available or the family can't afford it. When a family member needs care, the rest of the family has to develop a care strategy involving a discussion of work schedules, other family responsibilities, and who has paid leave available with the goal of reducing the interruptions to everyone's routines. When you exclude siblings and grandparents from the list of family relationships for caregiving, you unfairly restrict families' ability to engage in that strategizing. I'm caring for my aging parents right now. My dad has been in the emergency room four times in the past several months and had multiple inpatient medical procedures. My brother doesn't live in the area, and I'm the only one who can attend to my dad's medical needs. I take time off from work to accompany my dad to the hospital and care for my mom and their dog in my dad's absence because he is their caregiver. I have very little control over the medical procedures getting scheduled and rescheduling because of my work commitments usually means a delay in care that would compromise my eighty-four-year-old dad's health even more. If I didn't have paid, job-protected time off, I would take it anyway because I love my dad and it's my duty as his daughter to take care of him. First Shift has worked with kids, employees who have kids with autism and spouses with cancer. We have worked with adult grandchildren who have taken time off to care for ill grandparents because there is no one else in their family who can do it. Caregivers don't like interrupting their work either. It's very stressful. Medical needs are often not predictable and almost never able to be scheduled for the convenience of an employer. Giving an employer the right to deny leave will lead to a boss's unfair intrusion to family decisions and have the effect of making leave approvals inconsistent from agency to agency because they're contingent on a level of empathy of a boss, what we often refer to in my business as the boss lottery. Even if paid caregiving leave is reduced from eight weeks to two, most DC government employees will still be eligible to take up to sixteen weeks of leave under the DC Family Medical Leave Act. They just won't get paid. In an era where we are seeing a national movement toward the adoption of paid leave policies as good business and an essential component of an equitable and humane work environment, it doesn't make any sense for DC to reduce its policy. Caregiving leave requires documentation of the medical condition and the family relationship. If the concern is misuse of paid caregiving leave, the solution is to firm up your human resources practices, not restrict the program and deny leave to employees who have a legitimate need to take it. Finally, it may sound like a good check on leave misuse to have a requirement that employees work twelve weeks after returning from leave. But in my experience as an advocate, the people who quit before meeting those conditions do it because their family member was still sick after their allowable leave ran out and they had no choice. In addition, policies like this are impractical to enforce. The district might even have to file a lawsuit against its own former employee to recover the money paid out for leave, the cost of which would generally exceed the money that was recovered. Not long ago, our own Department of Employment Services liked to use the hashtag #leadingonleave. It is the highest form of hypocrisy for the district government to claim to promote and support progressive leave policies for private employers while gutting its own program and denying its own employees the same rights. Thank you. Unfortunately, I'm not available for questioning because I have another meeting that's happening right now, but I am happy to have email correspondence with any of your committee staff. Thanks.
Thank you very, very much for your testimony. Now we will hear from Mr. Finkenhausen. There you are. All right. Go right ahead, sir.
Hi. Good afternoon. Or I guess it's still good morning technically. My name is Aaron Finkhausen, and I'm the President of AFGE Local fourteen oh three. I'm testifying today on behalf of my union in opposition to Bill twenty-six dash zero-three-two-six, the District Employee Paid Parental Family and Medical Leave Amendment Act of twenty twenty-five, which would be a big step backwards for working families in the district. AFGE Local fourteen oh three represents more than three hundred legal services attorneys who work for the Office of the Attorney General and virtually every other agency across the district government. Our members are dedicated professionals committed to serving the public interest and the people of the District of Columbia. But we are not just government employees. We are also devoted mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers, grandparents, and grandchildren. Paid leave laws reflect the fact that there is more to life than work. Virtually every working person in the District of Columbia will have caregiving responsibilities at some point in their lifetime. Fair family leave benefits not only benefit employees but also employers as they help to attract and retain employees. Despite this, existing district law provides district government employees with less paid family leave than private sector workers. And Bill twenty-six dash zero-three-two-six would exacerbate this discrepancy. Although these proposed changes are likely to have cruel and profound impact, impacts on individual employees and their families, it is unlikely that they would result in any significant cost savings for the district. Rather, this bill appears to be based on a crude prejudice against family leave and the assumption without evidence that family leave, especially for caregiving, is prone to abuse by district employees. Under existing law, district government employees can take up to eight weeks for parental leave, eight weeks for, to care, to take leave to care for a family member, or two weeks to care for their own serious medical condition. This status quo means that district government already provides less generous leave benefits than private employers are required to provide under the district's Universal Paid Leave Act, which despite being titled universal, provides private sector, not public sector, employees up to twelve weeks of paid leave benefits for any of these categories of leave. Our local has supported past efforts to bring leave for district government employees in line with the Universal Paid Leave Act. Rather than support dedicated public servants, this bill would only make matters worse, and we urge the council to reject it. Bill twenty-six dash zero-three-two-six would cut leave for district employees from eight weeks down to just two. This drastic restriction to family leave will force district government employees to come back to work while their family members are still seriously ill, not only depriving the employee of the peace of mind that comes from caring for a sick loved one, but also depriving sick or incapacitated members of our community of their vital caregivers. This bill would also completely eliminate- This bill would also completely eliminate family leave to care for sick siblings and grandparents. This change is out of touch with the structure of many district families and this change appears to be an attempt to codify outdated paternalistic ideas about family structure. In fact, it's one of the real sources of pride that we have in our city that we have such an expansive definition of what family means and reflects what modern families look like. But this bill goes against that progress. Additionally, Bill twenty-six dash zero-three-two-six would require district government employees to enter into an honorous continuation of service agreement, of a service agreement that would make the employee liable if they needed to depart district government service. Specifically, while district employees only receive a maximum of eight weeks paid family leave, they would have to commit to return to work for at least twelve weeks or be required to return all salary paid during their leave required, during their leave. And this requirement is required of no other group of workers in the district. We are aware of no other district law which benefits, which provides benefits that an employee has duly earned are subject to some post hoc revocation or recovery for reasons other than fraud or abuse. This requirement adds insult to injury for dedicated government employees who often are not in control of the life circumstances driving them to take leave in the first place. Although a previous version of this provision, which only applied to probationary employees in their first year of district service, limited the district's recruitment efforts deductions from lump to, sorry, to quote deductions from lump sum leave payments, end quote. This new and extreme provision includes no similar limitation. Finally, we would be remiss not to note that Bill twenty-six dash zero-three-two-six would have an outsized impact on women who continue to shoulder the bulk, sorry, the bulk of caregiving responsibilities and are most likely to require family leave. And this would come at a time when women remain underrepresented and undersupervised in the workforce. The council should be doing more, not less, to ensure that women in district service have the benefits they need to provide for both their professional and personal lives. The district government should be a role model employer in our city and region. Our membership has rightfully earned their family leave benefits and they should not be subjected to additional limits on these benefits as thanks for their continued service to the district. So on behalf of my union, I encourage the council to reject this bill.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Now we'll hear from Dr. Kofi Omana.
Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, one minute into morning, still.
All right, you just got me. All right. All right. Chairperson Bonds and esteemed members of the committee who may listen to this recording later on, my name is Dr. Kofi Omama and I come before you today as the first vice president of AFGE Local two-seven-five and a dedicated public servant. I am not here to offer mere testimony, but I am here to issue a resounding condemnation on the District Employee Paid Parental Family and Medical Leave Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-five. This is not an amendment. It is a ferocious assault on the very foundations of family care and economic stability for district employees. It is a punitive, short-sighted, and ultimately cruel betrayal of the workforce that dedicates its lives to serving this city every day. Let us be, let us be unequivocally clear. This bill is an attack on new parents, an abandonment of workers who care for their most vulnerable loved ones, and a draconian non-compete clause disguised as fiscal prudence. It represents a shameful retreat from progress threatening to dismantle hard-won protections and inflict immeasurable harm on district families. The most egregious provision in this bill is the proposed reduction of paid leave for qualifying family events from eight work weeks to a paltry two. Let's remember, this journey began some time ago with discussions about twelve weeks, then was cut down to eight, and now this committee is discussing reducing it to two weeks. This is not reform. It is an outright dismantling of a critical lifeline for DC government families. Two weeks. Just let that number sink in for a second. Let it resonate. For new parents, this is an insult to the sanctity of new life. Two weeks is barely enough time for a mother to physically recover from childbirth, let alone navigate the complexities of breastfeeding, sleep deprivation, and the profound emotional shifts of new parenthood. I know this firsthand when our second child arrived in two thousand and fifteen. The improved leave policy provided us with support we didn't have in two thousand and eleven. It allowed me to better support my wife, bond with our new baby, and ensure our family started on solid footing. This bill strips that foundational support away, demanding that parents return to work with bodies still healing and minds reeling from exhaustion. And for those caring for seriously ill loved ones, two weeks is a cruel joke. Imagine a child undergoing chemotherapy or an elderly parent recovering from a stroke or a spouse facing a life-threatening diagnosis. I don't have to imagine. In two thousand and nineteen, my mother was hospitalized following a stroke and my ability to be present and to provide comfort was invaluable, made possibly by the leave available at the time. This bill forces district employees to make an impossible choice, abandon their loved ones at their time of greatest need or risk their own financial security and employment. As a result, this bill punishes compassion. Perhaps the most insidious provision of this, of the imposition of the twelve-week continuation of service agreement for non-probationary employees who use this meager pay leave backed by a repayment clause. Let's call it what it is, a debt trap and a de facto non-compete clause designed to hold employees hostage. An employee after enduring a major life event is told, use these two weeks. But if you dare leave the district within twelve weeks of returning, you will be forced to repay your salary. This is exploitative. It targets individuals at their most vulnerable turning, most vulnerable point, turning a fundamental human right into a financial weapon. It undermines employees' mobility and the rights in a way no other benefit would. Furthermore, tightening eligibility and giving agencies the power to negotiate and even deny leave strips employees of dignity and the control during their most critical moments. Members of this committee, this bill is not about efficiency. It is about austerity on the backs of the most vulnerable workers. It is not about fiscal responsibility. It is about short-sighted penny-pinching that will incur far greater costs in morale, talent retention, and human suffering. It will make the district of government an employer of last resort, especially for young families and those with caregiving responsibilities. As first vice president of AFGE Local two-seven-two-five, I urge you in the strongest possible terms to reject this bill in its entirety. Instead, I implore you to champion policies that genuinely support our district workforce, recognizing that investing in families and caregivers is not an expense but an essential investment in the health, stability, and future prosperity of our beloved city. Thank you, and I'm here to discuss.
Thank you. Thank you very much, particularly our union members today. I wanted to just do a little quick follow-up if I could. Mister Davis, what is the total membership of Local nineteen seventy-five?
At this time, we represent nine hundred and forty-eight dues-paying members. And in total, we have around one thousand and sixty members combined with non-paying and dues-paying members.
Okay, that's very important. And the contract for your union, what does this stipulate as to leave for the employees?
So we are under the basic Comp One and Comp Two agreement, which as you probably know is currently being renegotiated. But essentially, it depends on how many years of service you have. So you get a certain number of hours each pay period. But the number of hours that you get fluctuates whether or not you've been here over a year. I think it's a year, five years, and ten years. It is based on your longevity within the district. So one person could get four hours of leave per pay period, whereas another individual may get eight hours of leave in that pay period. I myself would get six hours of leave because of my tenure in the city each pay period. Now that refers specifically to annual leave. Sick leave is accrued at a reduced rate. But again, it would depend on the longevity at which you've been with district government.
All right, so sick leave is different from the annual leave that you just spoke of?
Correct.
Okay, all right. But that through your contract is guaranteed to you based on your tenure, the number of years that you had service in the government, correct?
Correct.
All right, so what you're discussing with me today is an additional leave package, am I correct? Because you already have what's in your contract. You're gonna get that, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So in other words, if I've been an employee in your union for ten years, I'm likely to get eight hours of sick leave, I mean, eight hours of annual leave and possibly similar number for sick leave every pay period, correct?
It will still be a reduced amount of sick leave, but that is correct.
Okay, all right. And so you today are not speaking about that. That's a given because it's in your contract, correct?
Correct.
You're talking about the additional hours that would be accrued for a individual irrespective of the number of years that they have put in place through service, right? So this is the additional package. What I'm trying to do is to understand where we are as a government. I hear you. I feel like I'm compassionate. I know that all of you are. And as such, I'm trying to understand just what we're really talking about. We're talking about, from my perspective, we're talking about a plan that primarily affects those who are the District of Columbia employee. It gives them a guarantee. But when, if you are a District of Columbia government employee and you're in a union, you get another package, an additional package. That's the point I'm trying to make. I don't want the public to be misled into thinking that your union contractual arrangements are somehow being changed through this proposal that we're discussing today. I want people to understand your union package is intact.
Correct. And what we would hope that the public understands is that that leave that is protected by our contract, that's personal leave for the most part. Now, yes, you can use sick leave that you have accrued to take care of a family member. But I will give you a personal example. My mother very quickly developed vascular dementia. And during that time, until my family medical leave was approved, what I had to deal with was constant threats of AWOLs and termination from my agency for the time that I took off in order to care for my mother. Had I not had the eight weeks of family medical leave available, then I wouldn't have the opportunity to sit before you today because my agency would have fired me the first day that they AWOL'd me. That's pretty much what all of these agencies do on a regular basis to begin with. So what we want the public to understand is that if council approaches this through a lens of fiscal austerity, we've already given you the tools to save tens of millions of dollars a year and this family medical leave cost is just not the way to do it.
Okay, and I hear you loud and clear and thank you for that clarification. I also have to be responsible for letting the public know that this government, the District of Columbia government, in no way is attempting to change or tamper with the leave packages that are inclusive of the various contractual arrangements we have through our union process. So I just wanted to make sure that we convey the real message to the public so that neither one of us is, you know, off-base on that. And I really appreciate your comments. And I'll tell you, I don't know where your plans or thoughts or reports of how we can save money have gone in the past. But since my committee represents our unions, I'd be very happy to receive any of that information and do my very best to see what we can do about it immediately because that's something that we should be concerned with as a government, period. And anytime you can save money and put it at another location where it will help, that's a good policy. And so I'd like to hear from you on that. I'd love to hear from you on that, in fact.
Certainly, we'll get that to you on Monday.
Okay, excellent. I love it. I love it. Thank you. Also, I'd like to ask Mister Finkhausen, how many individuals do you represent? Just the office of the Attorney General of three hundred or are there more?
So it's three, about, there's more than three hundred. It's about, I think it's around like three-twenty, something in that range. But it's attorneys who work for the Office of the Attorney General, but also work in agencies across the District of Columbia.
All right, so what is your union membership? Do you know?
Our union membership is, it's around two hundred and fifty, two hundred and forty, two fifty.
Okay, great. All right. And Mister, I'm sorry, Dr. Kofi Omana, your union represents the number?
Yeah, my, thank you. My, my local represents a little over thirteen hundred district government employees. And we have a little over a thousand of those people who are actually paying for that representation.
All right. And your, the agencies that you represent, where you have your union twenty-seven, twenty-five?
Sure. So we have representation at DC Health, Rental Housing Commission, Department of DC Community Housing Authority, Ossi, Housing and Community Development, DOB, Department of Buildings, Licensing, and Consumer Protection, and I believe DOE as well.
All right, thank you. That's important. I'd like to have on the record the fact that you, you are representing, all of you representing your various unions, our strong representation of the unions throughout our government, and that's important. So it's not just one segment that has an opinion. It's all of our unionized employees, which is a very large lion's share of the workforce in the District of Columbia. I think it's, we have about thirty-five thousand and of the thirty-five thousand, probably twenty-seven thousand or more are unionized. So I wanted to make sure we, we put that on the record. So thank you very much. I, we will be examining with the director of the Department of Human Resources how they feel about these proposals and why they think the proposals have enough merit that they want to see them implemented. So I'm looking forward to having that discussion with the department very shortly.
Chairperson Bonds.
Yes.
I did want to follow up on some of the question in between President Davis and you regarding the, the annual leave that we may earn. I did have in my testimony, but I wanted to highlight, back in two thousand and eleven, our first child was born. I started working for DC in July. My first child was born in September. I didn't have hardly any leave. So that time that I took off, I took off unpaid. When this program came years later, when my second child arrived, it was highly welcomed. It, like I said, was an amazing stabilizer. It allowed me to be at home and not go without pay. So this program, as we discussed back then, was about building equity within the system for people who are coming in new and people who have aging parents, people who have children who might have disabilities. So I don't want to confound the fact that we're earning through our contracts annual leave that hopefully many of us take to, you know, go see the world and unpack and unwind a little bit. But we still have to come back to this, this city that we love and that we wake up every day to go and make, be beautiful. So I don't want those two to be lost on us. We're earning some of that time. But then this other part of it, we're also paying into it as tax members, taxpayers. And this is allowing people who don't have anything on the books. And this is allowing people who don't have anything on the books to take leave for whatever medical parental leave that it might be. And going from eight weeks down to two, again, is, is, is unreasonable.
All right, so I think I'm hearing that from your perspective, you're making the case that some amendments would be helpful to new parents irrespective of where they are on the amount of leave that they may have earned by virtue of their time and place or their so-called service agreement that they have with the government. I think that's what I'm hearing.
No.
You're hearing, don't tamper with it, you want it to stay the way it is.
Yeah, I'm not making a policy.
All right, okay, okay. I'm, I'm giving you, giving you a chance.
I'm giving you perspective. In two thousand and eleven, I had no time, and I had to take, I had to go unpaid until I did earn some time, but then this policy came along and it was a, a blessing of a policy. We're gonna have people coming into the district, the district wants to recruit new talent, those people are probably going to be younger in childbearing ages. That program helps them. You have people who are caring for older parents. That program helps them despite the fact that they're earning annual leave. You have people who are of middle age, who have children with, with issues. There, there's so many areas in which this program just covers in general by keeping it the way that it is. And if you get in there and you start dismantling and tampering with it, you're going to upend somebody's life some way, somehow, because not everybody's situation is cookie cutter and easy to, to be able to be modified and covered under a policy that has all these different nuances in place.
All right, well, then I have to ask our three labor leaders a little bit about how do they see the federal required leave program, which I guess is pretty much covered in their contractual arrangement? That's a given. How do you see that being the process that covers the needs of your employees?
Could I speak to that?
Yes, please.
I did wanna, I'm gonna answer your question, I promise, but before I get there, I want to point out, you asked earlier about if there's a difference between what our contracts provide and what this bill would provide. And I just wanted to clear that our contract, AFG Local fourteen oh three's contract, which was just approved September sixteenth, twenty twenty five, provides that, provides for eight weeks of paid family leave to care for a family member with a serious health condition. So that does directly contradict what this bill says. Now, to your question about having the, the federal, the, the FMLA, basically the, the Family Medical Leave Act, sort of be the process for this. The FMLA and the DC FMLA, what they provide for is a leave entitlement. And what that means is that if I, if I'm sick or if my family is sick, I have a child, if I have a qualifying event, then I am entitled to take leave, and that leave can be any form of leave benefit that I have, including unpaid leave. My, one of my concerns about this bill is I think it could potentially be perceived as retaliation for taking leave under the FMLA, the DC FMLA, and that is if you take your leave to provide for, you know, care for a family member, and you use that leave sort of intermittently during the FMLA period, you might have exhausted your FMLA leave, and then you're required to come to work for another period of weeks, that, that sort of certification, you're gonna return to work and work for, I think it's fourteen weeks or twelve weeks, whatever it is. I, I can envision a scenario in which you have a sick parent who's dying, and you just can't come back to work, you need to, you need to care for them. And then the district says, okay, well, we're gonna take back that leave benefit. And I could see somebody, you know, suing the city and saying that that's retaliation. I took this leave, that this benefit that you provided, and, you know, my, my father needed me to be there during, you know, the end of his life, and then you told me I had to pay you back for the leave that I was given. I, I think that that is, you know, I mean, especially considering that I think it's like sixty five percent or something, if Americans live paycheck to paycheck. And the idea that they'd get the, this leave and then be able to pay it back is just, it's not, it's not something that could be reasonably expected. And I, I think that just relying on, on that, plus the two weeks, plus this period that you have to certify that you're gonna come back and continue to work, I think it's a recipe for a disaster. And then, and then to be clear, the, the benefit that the federal law is giving and that the DC FMLA also gives is not paid leave. It's just you have the right to take unpaid leave. And, you know, especially for our middle-class families, it's very difficult to take unpaid leave.
Okay, when we say that you have the right to take unpaid leave, this is the leave that you have earned by virtue of the work weeks that you have on the books, am I correct?
So the leave entitlement under the FMLA and the DC FMLA is an entitlement to take leave, whatever form of leave. So if you have, if you have a bunch of hours of sick leave, you can take your hours of sick leave. If you have no leave saved up at all, then what the entitlement is, is for you to not get fired while you're not working, basically. So you're taking unpaid leave.
All right, so it includes accrued leave hours as well as un- accrued, or where you, you don't have anything, but you can advance, you can be advanced leave as needed, I guess is a better way of calling it. The advanced leave that some individuals from time to time may find that they have to take. Okay, I just want to make sure. I, I'm hoping that some of our employees are listening and that it helps to clear up some of the questions we have gotten from individual employees. And so that's why I'm, I'm, I'm playing this record again and again and again, trying to make sure that we give everyone who's interested an opportunity to understand just what it means to be a unionized employee and what is available to you and how you can use that, since so many of our employees are unionized. So I, I thank you all very, very much for your, for your time and input today. All right, we also have online Mr. Wayne Inoch, who is the Executive Director for ASME Council twenty. So we will advance you. All right, okay, all right. Please go ahead, sir. We'll take your testimony now.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Bonds. Excuse me. I am Wayne Inoch, Executive Director for ASME District Council twenty. Prior to serving in this capacity, I was an employee of the Government of the District of Columbia at Child and Family Services for thirty years. I've also been a dedicated servant in various labor leadership roles since two thousand and five. The district's paid parental, family, and medical leave is a trend-setting initiative that sets a standard that other jurisdictions and employers should strive to implement. Although it may not be perfect, it is a prime example of a benefit that is needed nationally. However, the changes that are being proposed will unfortunately take us major steps backwards. This legislation sends a message that DC government does not want its own employees to have a benefit that it provides to the public. This legislation proposes to repeal grandparents and siblings as a family member. In today's society, many people are raised by their grandparents, and having this benefit is crucial in an aging society. An employee's ability to assist the care of a grandparent is also crucial. This will allow employees to participate in the treatment and maintenance of elderly relatives that may have limited, it may have a limited support system. This is a critical time of life. As society has increased life expectancy, we will see more citizens with this need. This leave would be a resource that allows employees to be caretakers while not losing their job and being able to pay their own bills. Although not necessarily elderly, siblings are also targeted with this legislation. Many of us have relatives that are not local, and having this leave will enable us to travel and aid a sibling that leaves, lives outside of the immediate area. Secondly, why remove these relationships from the program for only district employees, but they remain in the program for the public? As recent as yesterday, these were relationships that are allowed in the program that the Department of Employment Services administers. The new legislation shortens, shortens the time off that is available for qualifying family events from eight work weeks to two work weeks. This is a substantial decrease in the time that will be available to care for a child or spouse. The program under DOE S allows twelve weeks to care for a family member. Therefore, DC employees are already seeing a shortened time. There is also concerning new language in the legislation that allows agencies to determine certain instances that interfere with operations. This is subjective language, and it empowers the agencies to pick and choose who they want to award leave to without any checks and balances, or any consideration for the care needed. How will human resource officials be able to consistently and approve requests fairly? Overall, what message is the district government sending to the public and the workforce? Are government workers not as important as private workers? Are you saying that you are going to reduce this benefit to private workers too? Please do not support this legislation. It sends the wrong message, and it takes us backwards. In addition to my written testimony, I would also like to add that this amended language is in the new legislation that requires the continuation of service for twelve weeks because of the use of two weeks of medical and family leave or eight weeks of parental leave does not appear balanced. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for your testimony, sir. Could you please give me your union membership for Council twenty?
So we have members that aren't just in DC or in DC government, but for our DC membership, we have about five thousand, and the bargaining unit is about eight, seven thousand. But we also have federal and private sector and Virginia members.
All right, well, thank you, and I hope that those who are listening understand the magnitude of impact that we're speaking of today with thousands and thousands of employees being affected. So thank you very, very much. Is there anything else you would like to add as it relates to this matter, since we talked with the other union leaders?
I'd just like to add that you, I, I believe you asked about the leave that is in, in contracts. And oftentimes, it sounded like the, there was an implication that unions were getting more than other employees of DC. And most of the union leave that is accrued is mirrors what is received for non-union employees. I don't want the public to think that the unions are trashing the city and, you know, trying to take advantage of something. We're not trying to take advantage. As you can see, we're actually trying to get what the general public, many of, is already getting.
All right, so thank, thank you, thank you very much for that. We're gonna move along, and we have with us we have, we're gonna start with Nashant Karakati. And we also have another, a union leader, David Hogland, who is with the, who is president of the DC Firefighters. And I believe that is all of our public witnesses that we have today. Nice to see you.
Green Chairwoman Bonds, members of the committee and staff, my name is Nashant Karakati. I'm testifying today in opposition to parts of B twenty six, three, two, six, based on my personal experience as a caregiver while I was employed with the DC government. Like many caregivers, I was thrust unexpectedly in the role. My eighty-seven-year-old father came to visit in March of twenty two, twenty twenty two, but suffered a heart attack shortly after his arrival. The impact of the late-stage heart trauma caused his mobility to be severely limited, and he could no longer care for himself. In two months, my dad went from a house guest to in-home hospice patient. I cared for him every day until he passed in November of twenty two. Because of his limited mobility in our house architecture, bedroom, bathroom accidents became a daily occurrence, and even with the support of in-home care services paid by Medicare, my dad was, still required a lot of daily care and attention. Without going into details, I shouldered the load to spare awkward moments between my wife and father, and that load included taking my dad to all his planned medical appointments and even unplanned ones where, once where he fell and suffered injuries to his hip. I want to thank Mayor Bowser for, Mayor Mayor Bowser for creating the program that gave employees eight weeks of pay leave to caretake for eligible family members and gave me invaluable flexibility to manage my father's care with compassion instead of anxiety or resentment. Additionally, I want to commend Deputy Mayor Lindsay Apia and the DMPSHA team, who are always very supportive of me as I navigated challenges, balancing my caregiving responsibilities during my time with EOM. But not all employees are fortunate enough to be in a supportive work environment as I was, with understanding supervisors and team members who are willing to help. When I saw this bill come up for hearing, I wanted to testify and ensure that someone is speaking on behalf of the hundred and nine thousand caregivers, some of who are, are part of the thirty five thousand who proudly call themselves DC government employees, of the invaluable benefit of caregiving leave. If I was still in my position at DMPSHA, I would not have testified about the benefits of caregiving leave because the bill was introduced by the mayor, and it would have been challenging to publicly speak against the bill that was introduced by the executive and my supervisors. Some suggested amendments for the bill. I firmly advise against a decrease of pay leave for government employees from eight weeks to two weeks, or limiting the definition of a caregiver. The reality is the pandemic disrupted a lot of the family structures and supports, and a caregiver is not always a spouse or domestic partner. If the accountability provisions of the bill are maintained, such as oral written notice given, it will lessen the impact of the workforce to employment and service delivery. But let's be clear, the impact of the program is the eight weeks of pay leave to navigate unexpected trauma to a loved one. And the proposed decrease of six weeks of added support to the loved ones in need of support after the qualifying trauma would have an immeasurably negative impact on the caregivers, their spouses and family, and loved ones in need of care. Additionally, I would explore potential carve-outs for agencies that have minimum staffing requirements. The cost of overtime attributed to paid family leave program, for example, in the public safety cluster, waste management or street maintenance, or other employees are required to deploy during emergencies or provide a daily service to residents, may need to have different policies in place that accommodate for the need of agencies to fully staff at every position on shift, particularly if it's legally mandated. I'm a little over time, I just want to conclude that strongly against the eight weeks and the limited definition of caregiver. Thank you, and I'll answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Hogland.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Bonds, how you doing?
Good, thank you.
My name is David Hogman. I'm President of the International Association of Firefighters, IFF Local thirty-six, proudly representing roughly two thousand dedicated firefighters serving the District of Columbia. I also proudly serve as the Secretary for the Metro Washington Council of the AFL-CIO. Our members work tirelessly twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, to protect and serve our community. I'm testifying today to express serious concerns regarding the proposed changes to paid family leave benefits, which could impose significant hardships on our workforce. The demanding nature of firefighting and emergency medical services exposes our members to heightened risks of personal illness, many of which are not covered under existing presumptive legislation and often require extended recovery periods. Scientific evidence underscores that the physiological and psychological stresses inherent in our members' duties stemming from exposure to trauma and hazardous working conditions result in amplified inflammatory responses. In two thousand and twenty-five, our members have faced extraordinary challenges, responding to an unprecedented volume of structure fires, including one just this morning, emergency medical calls, a catastrophic plane crash, and supporting the opening of a new- emergency medical calls, a catastrophic plane crash, and supporting the opening of a new hospital. The proposed changes introduce restrictive eligibility criteria for extended family members, which would disproportionately affect our diverse workforce. Many of our members deeply rooted in the district were raised by non-biological parental figures such as grandparents or aunts and uncles and remain primary caregivers for all of these family members. The proposed restrictions risk undermining the integrity of these family units by limiting access to paid family leave during qualifying events, creating unnecessary financial and emotional strain. Our members already face long leave times getting their PFL approved by DCHR. And I want to thank the Fire and EMS Department's own PFL coordinators led by Lauren Price and Brittany Jackson, who make sure our members' PFL is approved as fast as possible, eliminating the need for restored leave and heading off the creation of any unnecessary pay problems. This proposed amendment also reduces the amount of PFL you can receive to care for a family member. It is well-known that caring for an aging population is an emerging crisis throughout this country. Allowing just two weeks for someone to get care stabilized is unrealistic with the rising costs of caring for the sick and aging. Our members have less flexibility to part work when they need to care for a family member, allowing them plenty of leave so that they can work to stabilize a care situation will place less of a staffing burden on our department and prevents emergency absences. Local 36 respectfully urges the DC Council to preserve the current paid family leave benefits to support the well-being of our firefighters and their families. We are confident in your commitment to upholding the family values of our community and ensuring that our members, who selflessly serve the district, receive the support they need to continue their vital work. Thank you.
Thank you both for your, your testimony. And I certainly note the comments that you made this year. I did want to again ask the firefighters, what is your, your membership and how many are affected through this?
Yeah, so we have roughly 2,000 active members who are currently serving and then about another 1,500 retired members who obviously, this doesn't apply to, apply to in that sense. I'll also add based on your line of questioning, so all of our leave accrual is, is in DC law. It's not enshrined in our collective bargaining agreement. And, you know, with that line of questioning that you asked the other labor leaders, I think the other thing that's important to keep in mind is, you know, leave accrual is often based on seniority. For instance, you only ever earn four and a half hours of sick leave throughout your career. So our newer members who are younger on the job are, will not have had the opportunity to accrue a significant amount of leave. So this paid family leave benefit is even, even larger and more impactful for them.
All right. So I, I take it from the discussions that I tried to have this morning that this bill doesn't work for our employees. This idea of looking at the leave policy is, in other words, that it's, it's working, so don't try to fix it. I guess it's the best way. That's my takeaway from the testimonies we've, we've heard. I don't think we've heard from anyone that says, well, let's give it some consideration and this is how we can tweak it. But currently, it does allow for eight work weeks of leave. And this is paid leave, that means without having to go into your, any other leave that you may have, I guess is the best way to call it, during the 12-month period, and it can be any combination. And I think this is the piece we didn't really talk about. It can be any combination. Up to eight weeks for parental leave. We're keeping that. The proposal is not to tamper with that parental leave. And so that takes us to the new parents. They still have an opportunity to do that. The change is for the eight weeks for family leave events, which can include an array of family relationships that we have. And I do believe that we all understand the family structure is different from 40 years ago, 50 years ago. And then, of course, an additional two work weeks for qualifying medical leave events, that would remain the same. The only change is looking at the qualifying family leave. That's what this proposal does. Everything else is intact. And again, I just want to remind the public that we also pointed out where there are some of our labor members that have an additional leave package within their agreement, their service agreement. So, but I'm still hearing strongly that the proposal is, don't fix it because it's not broken.
Yeah, it's already like a pretty stressful approval process to go through. So just kind of the added stress of having less time is kind of undue burning. And I think you've heard testimony from a lot of other people. There's other ways to realize cost savings. And, you know, this is not it. And I'm, you know, I'm certainly grateful for the ability because I've, I've been able to take it for the birth of a child and I've got twins on the way. So I know, I know I won't get double for that, but the, the other thing I'll add specific to public safety is, as you know, we need our physical stature in order to do our job. So our members' leave balances might get burned up if they injure themselves not on the job. And, you know, we can't, when we can't do our job, given our shift volume, we, we burn through our leave pretty quickly.
I, I appreciate that. And quite honestly, the other unions did not speak so much to that point. Fire Department is here, so we want to talk to you about that. Being our first responders, police were not here. I don't believe that Mr. Davis spoke much about that. My, my curiosity is how do we, and I look at the numbers of applications for leave by the fire department, which is nowhere as, as many as I see for MPD. But you both are considered first responders and having you on duty is so important to the lifeline of our community. So if you have in, let's say in your firehouse, I guess your average membership is what, 30, 20 to 30 on duty at a time?
Oh, at a particular fire.
For the week, let's say the week.
Yeah, per shift, there's about 420 to 30 firefighters working today, for instance.
Okay, citywide.
Yes.
Okay, citywide. But I'm trying to understand what happens if you have 25% of those individuals out?
Right, so.
How do we compensate for it? I can talk to the teachers about it because we actually have the substitute teacher program and what have you. How do we, how do we manage that?
So this is why in, in other hearings and other committees, we testify a lot about the department's staffing factor and making sure that we have enough firefighters actually on duty to cover all seats on the fire trucks, on ambulances. But generally, an, an unanticipated absence is, is covered by overtime if there's not enough extra people on duty to cover those spots, right? And so part of the problem is, is we don't, based on just leave accruals, et cetera, we don't actually have enough firefighters on the job to cover that spread on a normal day. And so the challenge with our public safety agency is the fact, and it's, you know, it's a safety issue, obviously. The fire, the fire truck has to go out the door with a certain number of people because they all have very specific jobs on fires and emergency medical calls. So if, if we don't have the agency properly staffed, you know, that's why you see, you know, these really large numbers of overtime numbers for MPD. And, and sometimes our overtime numbers will get pretty high. A part of the reason possibly that the police have more requests is that, just to keep in mind, they're, they're a little bit larger than we are. And if they were fully staffed, they'd probably be about three times our size, but they're about twice, not quite twice our size, but, you know, they're up there.
So that just takes us into another domain. This whole thing about how do we properly staff the service needs that we have for our city? And why is there such a delay in doing that?
Yeah, so it's, it's a bill that we've talked to you about and it's currently getting costed by the CFO, and I'm going to talk about it a little bit upstairs when I'm done here. But we proposed this deferred retirement option amendment plan of 2025, which this program allows the police and fire department to better predict attrition. Because right now, when we tend to hire in spurs and we have a lot of people retire, they only need to give 60 days' notice that they're going to retire. Well, it takes about six months to train a new firefighter. So what this drop program is intended to do is you retire and you enroll in this drop program for a predetermined term of three years. So that the department can look and say, hey, we've got this many people in the drop program. That means that we need to hire this many people because we're going to know the exact date that these people are retiring. Versus now, you just put in 60 days' notice and that's, that's when you're gone. So the department's been very aggressively hiring. They need to keep hiring. We've been working really hard with the executive to increase our number of FTEs to account for that. Because it, it seems, it's, it's, in reality, it's a cost savings, right? Because you're not paying somebody overtime to fill the position. You're just paying someone regular to pay the position.
And so do we have that same concept operating as it relates to MPD? Because I know in years past, when I was active with my community advisory committee, it was pointed out that usually with an officer was planning to retire, he got a nice transfer to a softer landing for the last year. But somehow we didn't use that soft landing to understand we needed to hire a replacement. And so here we are today without the numbers that we really feel we need.
Yeah, yeah, you're, yeah, you're referring to the SPO program that they have in place for patrol officers. Right. And that's why we really need to focus on this, right? Because labor in general and public safety in general, we're really in a recruitment crisis. And we just need to continue to create programs to support a pathway into the fire department and the police department. That's why we supported this Ward Eight Advanced Technical Center that's going to have an EMT program. So DC high school students can become trained EMTs. And then UDC, we have this paramedic program that we're establishing. So they can do all of that and then have a direct pathway from DC schools onto our job. But these are things we need to keep doing aggressively and aggressively recruiting and catching these students frankly in middle school and get them interested in these public safety careers. So those are some of the longer-term things we're working on. And I think in the short term, this, these are, these are all conversations that you and I've had before, right? We need to negotiate collective bargaining agreements on time. We need to, you know, make sure that we're compensating people similarly to what other jurisdictions are so that we remain competitive. Because it's, this is a very unique place to be a first responder and it's, and all of our members are first responders here and they're very prideful about it and protecting the entire district.
I would think there are also first responder jobs, tasks that must be performed, which does not require you to be a firefighter, like to go into the flames, to know how to utilize the hose, up the ladder, all of those things that, you know, are characteristic of being a firefighter. So I'm wondering if we've also thought about a category of, of tasks that can be done by those that are not certified as a firefighter, but they assist in the firefighting process. And maybe we need to start training for that. That will get maybe more young people interested in assisting. You always have neighborhood individuals who we hear rush into a flame, get the dog out, get the person out. I'm just wondering, they're, they're good souls that want to help.
Yeah.
And instinctively, they know what to do. And I'm just wondering if we have thought about creating a category where people can help to make, you know, they can pull that hose and, and hook it up and what have you. That's where I'm coming from.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. So I would, I would say that the pathway for all of those individuals is the Office of Unified Communications. If they, if they're into public safety and they don't feel physically capable of doing our job, then they should go apply at the Office of Unified Communications where they are desperate for staff as well. All of those tasks that you talk about, we, we address in training, right? So we also encourage people who are like, oh, I could never go into a burning building. Don't sell yourself short. Come, let us train you. We'll condition you to do this job. We'll give you the tools to succeed and, and, and how to operate safely and effectively on a fire or emergency medical call.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Nashant, it's always nice to see you, if I may call you that. And Nashant was a member of my team when I first started here at the council. And I'm happy that he is still with us and he knows why with his emergency himself. So thank you very, very much for your testimony today. Thank you. All right. Okay. That concludes our public witnesses and we are going to turn quickly to our government witnesses. And we will call up Director Hall from the Department of Human Resources. And we also have a virtual witness in Dr. Unique Morris Hughes, Director of Department of Employment Services. She is online. Thank you for being with us.
Good afternoon.
All right. Excellent. So, Dr. Hall, we're going to start with you.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Bonds and members of the Committee on Executive Administration and Labor. My name is Charles Hall Jr. and I have, I have the privilege of serving as the Director for the DC Department of Human Resources or DCHR. First, let me thank Mayor Bowser for the privilege of serving and for the opportunity to testify today on Bill 26-0326, the District Employee Paid Parental Family and Medical Leave Amendment Act of 2025. The mayor is introducing this legislation in response to the unprecedented fiscal climate facing our present and immediate future. The chief financial officer forecasted the district faces an unprecedented decline of more than $1 billion over the next three years compared to previous estimates. The projected decline is largely due to anticipated cuts to the federal workforce. The CFO has also noted the city's sources of revenue are down in every category, such as sales taxes, property taxes, and income taxes. As a result, the district is expected to face an average shortfall of roughly $342 million for the, for each of the next three years. The district is required to operate in an environment unlike any other jurisdiction. As we recently saw, Congress nullified the district's approved FY25 spending levels, reverting to the FY24 spending levels and thereby cutting the district's local budget by $1.1 billion. Congress took this action even though those funds were generated solely by the district's local taxes and charges, and despite previously approving the district's full FY25 budget twice. Congress's ability to unilaterally alter funding allocations of the district's own tax dollars introduces an additional element of fiscal uncertainty. Against this backdrop, the district government must reexamine all areas where we can mitigate projected revenue losses and congressionally created shortfalls. We understand that paid family leave or PFL is a critical program. This legislation ensures the core benefits of PFL remain available while improving cost savings and reducing service disruptions. We do not take lightly the changes we're proposing. Bill 26-0326 will shift current PFL offerings. The legislation changes the number of paid family leave hours that employees would be able to use to care for their family members' serious health conditions from eight weeks to two weeks and narrows the scope of eligible family members for whom they believe can be used. Currently, district government employees may use PFL as soon as they're employed. The bill will instead require employees to be employed with the district for at least 180 days to be eligible for PFL. Currently, there is no continuation of service requirement for non-probationary employees following use of PFL. This legislation requires non-probationary employees to continue to serve as a district employee for 12 weeks after they use PFL. But let me also be clear about what this legislation does not do. It does not alter paid leave for following the birth or adoption of a child. We still offer eight weeks of paid leave and are proud to be a nationwide leader offering this benefit. This proposed shift to PFL offerings would maintain our district values while balancing our benefits in the while balancing our benefits in the face of enormous financial challenges. PFL usage for the care of a family member creates a large recurring cost for the district and the actual cost of this PFL usage is much greater as there are related costs such as requiring other employees to perform overtime to cover absent employees' work. Reducing the hours to take care of a family member from three hundred and sixty to eighty, as proposed by this legislation, would save the district significant money. The difficult decision to narrow the scope of eligible family members is meant to ensure the program remains sustainable in the face of a one billion dollar revenue shortfall. With an expected one billion dollars in lost revenue, every dollar saved, whether from this program and other program adjustments or measures, helps stabilize the city's financial position, prevents more drastic cuts to essential services, and ensures that the district can provide first-in-class services. These changes also help ensure first-in-class service continuity. Even with a reduction from eight weeks to two weeks for family care, the district government will continue to stand out as a regional leader in offering accessible and inclusive paid family leave benefits. For example, Virginia state government employees only receive receive paid leave for parental bonding, while caregiving responsibilities are covered solely through unpaid leave under Family and Medical Leave Act, or FMLA. These employees must use accrued accrued annual or sick leave to maintain an income. Maryland state government employees face similar limitations with paid leave available only for parental purposes and family caregiving supported only through unpaid FMLA or personal leave. The district's PFL program by comparison is well-established and dependable, offering paid time off for most FMLA qualifying events, including family caregiving and not just parental bonding. At the county level, only a few jurisdictions offer paid leave specifically for family caregiving. Fairfax County and Loudoun County provide up to six weeks of paid family leave annually, while Arlington County offers up to ten days of paid family leave for an employee to care for a child, spouse, or parent. However, jurisdictions such as Montgomery County, Prince George's County, and the City of Alexandria offer paid leave benefits only for parental bonding, not family caregiving. In this context, even at two weeks, the district's paid family leave benefit remains competitive and more inclusive than what is currently available in neighboring jurisdictions. The other elements of this legislation, such as adding continuation of service agreements and modifying eligibility requirements, are necessary. We've observed a gradual increase of the gross use of PFL and saw a twenty seven percent increase from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty five. Assuming this upward trend continues, we must future-proof this benefit. Adjustments to eligibility and a requirement of continuance of service agreement work together to ensure the program's long-term sustainability by placing guardrails on how widely the program can be used. PFL is not is meant to be mutually exclusive and mutually beneficial. The employee receives paid time off and we, the employer, benefit from their continued knowledge and talent. Such an investment needs safeguards so that we can spend wisely, especially in such a financially precarious time. We want to afford employees the ability to take their leave with minimal disruption to agency operations. Strategic retention tools allow agencies to have reasonable forecasting for workforce fluctuations. Establishing a waiting period along with a continuance of service agreement allows agency leadership to adequately prepare for personnel gaps. This is incredibly important for some of our most forward-facing agencies, such as MPD, FEMA's, DPW, DYRS, and CFSA, all who have lost employees shortly after they used PFL. Again, the use of PFL is not the issue, but rather the vacuum that it is created when positions are vacant for extended periods of time. As an employer, we are committed to offering generous benefits to our employees. However, we must also remain realistic about the changing landscape that lies ahead. In conclusion, the proposed amendments to the PFL program are a necessary and measured response to the district's unprecedented fiscal challenges. The proposed changes ensure the program's long-term sustainability while preserving preserving critical services and workforce stability. I also want to stress that even with these changes, there are core PFL benefits that will remain unchanged. Employees will still have eight weeks of paid leave for the birth and adoption of a child and two weeks of paid leave to care for the employee's own health condition. Even as we adjust certain aspects of the PFL program to address financial and fiscal constraints, we remain committed to upholding the dignity and the well-being of our workforce. Together, the changes proposed by the bill present a pragmatic path forward that honors the dignity of our employees while protecting the future integrity of our public services. I want to thank you for the time to testify this morning and I'm available or this afternoon and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hall. I want to I failed to swear you in and I would like to do that at this time. If you would raise your right hand. Do you confirm that you the testimony that you have just given us is complete and accurate?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. I also would like to we'll take the testimony of Dr. Hughes. I will try to navigate between these two very different proposals. But let's see, Dr. Hughes, I'll swear you in also for your testimony if you raise your right hand.
Okay.
All right, do you swear or commit that the testimony that you are to give is accurate and complete?
I do.
Thank you very much, and we'll take your testimony now.
All right, well, good afternoon, Chairperson Bonds, Councilmembers and staff of the Committee on Executive Administration and Labor. My name is Dr. Unique Morris Hughes. I am the Director of the DC Department of Employment Services. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on Bill twenty six dash zero four two eight, the Youth Work Permit and Employment Protection Act of twenty twenty five, which I will refer to as the bill or Bill twenty six dash oh four two oh four two eight. Across the country, we are witnessing a troubling rise in child labor violations. Since twenty nineteen, the number of minors found to be employed in violation of federal child labor laws has increased by thirty one percent. In fiscal year twenty twenty four alone, the US Department of Labor concluded seven hundred and thirty six investigations involving child labor violations affecting over four thousand children. These numbers underscore the need for local jurisdiction to modernize and strengthen their child labor protections. In the District of in the District of Columbia, our child labor laws have not been substantively updated since nineteen seventy six. The current statute assigns responsibility for youth work permits to the Board of Education, an entity that ceased to exist with a transition to mayoral control in two thousand and seven. As a result, youth aged between fourteen and seventeen, regardless if they attend DC public schools, charter schools, private schools, or home schools, must obtain work permits through DC public schools in two ways. One, from DCPS's central services team responsible for this work. Or two, through their high school. DCPS does not track the number of work permits issued to minors by each school. Centrally, each school here, DCPS, issues approximately a hundred work permits. This outdated framework has led to inconsistent implementation, confusion among employers and families, and limited enforcement authority. Bill twenty six dash zero four two eight addresses these issues by consolidating responsibility for youth work permits under the Department of Employment Services. This modernization will streamline the process for approximately twenty two thousand eligible district youth and provide a clear centralized system for compliance and enforcement. The bill also rewrites the statute in plain language, making it more accessible to employers, parents, and youth. This clarity will help reduce confusion, promote compliance, and enhance enforcement tools, including civil suit authority through the Office of the Attorney General. We are pleased that the bill includes provisions that strengthen DOES's inspection authority, an area we believe is critical to effective enforcement. The Department of Employment Services has extensive experience enforcing wage and hour laws through the Office of Wage and Hour, appearing before the Office of Administrative Hearings, and collaborating with the Office of Attorney General and federal partners on complex labor cases. While we support the bill's overall direction, we expect we want to raise to your attention that the bill currently requires DOES to conduct annual audits of all work and special occupation permits. While we understand the intent, this mandate would be operationally burdensome and exceed our current staffing and system capacity. We recommend modifying this provision to allow for targeted or risk-based audits or extending the audit cycle to every two to three years. Last, DOES wants to ensure that with this legislation, the agency has clear enforcement authority so we can clearly implement the law. DOES remains committed to protecting the rights and safety of young workers while supporting their development and entry into the workforce. The youth labor landscape is evolving with more diverse employment opportunities and challenges. This legislation is a critical step toward towards ensuring that our laws keep pace with these changes. We look forward to working with the committee to refine and implement this important legislation. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, thank you very much, Dr. Hughes. I'd like to go to you first and just since you seemingly are in favor of this legislation and want to try to examine it further. We had one witness today and that was concerned that we would have so-called safeguards in place so that the implementation would be an assurance of a better system than we currently have in place. And it sounds like you're in agreement that this bill does that. But what I wanted to ask about, you know, the government is required to have reports, 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 reports. And reports on an annual basis is par for the course. And so you're indicating that to provide an annual audit would be somewhat difficult because of what? Can you elaborate on that?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So the legislation in its current form requires annual audits of all of the work permits that are issued, including those special permits. And if we're talking about, you know, in the potential universe of employee of youth that may want or need work permits, that could go up to twenty two thousand. And so it's not a it's not practical to audit annually a population that could go up to twenty two thousand. And so we're we're asking for what is on trend and on par with industry and similar to what other state labor agencies do, and it's not an annual audit. So either looking at risk-based auditing or extending the timeframe of audits from, you know, one years to every three years. We think that we have some best practices in place that we could currently utilize to audit everyone that has issued a work permit, but it wouldn't be every single work permit annually.
All right, you would give us a sampling through the auditing process, it sounds like.
A sampling is certainly an option. Also, we can look at on a rolling basis, so maybe it's every two to three years. We can look at risk-based auditing, so targeting industries or occupations that have the highest number of violations, but also the highest number of work permits. There's a myriad of of ways that we could do auditing to support enforcement.
All right, well, I I appreciate that. And it sounds like the other components are something that are doable for sure through your agency. Are there any other safeguards that you feel need to be in place in order to implement this legislation?
Yeah, we just want to make sure that there's language that clearly outlines that the Department of Employment Services has enforcement authority. We don't want there to be any confusion about who is enforcing the law. And my team stands ready to work with your team to make sure that the language as drafted clearly indicates such. But but other than that, we're generally supportive of this. And Councilmember Bonds, you know, we talk a lot about youth. We talk a lot about apprenticeship opportunities for youth. What what this does, this legislation, it allows us to continue to support positive youth employment and apprenticeship opportunities for young people in the District of Columbia and that they're able to work safely in conditions that are safe with rules and guidelines that are clear for families and and employers and schools. So we think that this has the ability to be a win-win for the committee and for the District of Columbia.
All right, I think I hear where you your concerns are regarding an audit. I think we are talking two things. Yes, an audit and we I think the idea of sampling or risk-based, both are very positive. Give us some grounds for moving forward. But I think we also are talking about the numbers game that we all play. And that is a report that on an annual basis that would indicate to us the number of applicants or applications that we've taken in and the number that we have said yes to. And I'm most interested in the timeframe by which the permitting process can take place. The public witness made a point of saying, well, if a young person needs a work permit, they need it in a few days. A few days translates to a week or two maximum. Is that something that you find your agency would be able to do?
Yeah, and I I think the legislation in its current draft, and I'll have to confirm with my team, my understanding is that a young person would be able to apply for a work permit as early as two weeks before they would start employment. So it would give a young person, employer, and family an opportunity to plan for employment. I I think a couple of week, one to two weeks is reasonable. I I don't have any pauses with that. Councilmember, you you also mentioned a little bit about reporting. And so aggregate data, like the number of applications, the number of people who applied for application or applied for a permit, those sorts of aggregate high-level data points, I think, could be made available annually. But when we start talking about like auditing and getting, you know, for every single of the person with the ability to go up to twenty two thousand, that's a bit more difficult. But aggregate big data, I think, is in the realm of possibility and that does not give me pause.
All right, well, thank you. And back to the application time. Are you suggesting that you would need the two weeks pre-work start date in order to process the request for permit? And the permit would be forthcoming within a week or two? Are you saying that you would have you you prefer the two-week pre? I guess, pre?
The way that
What are you saying?
Sure, the way that the proposal is current, the legislation is currently draft is that it allows two weeks for young people to obtain documentation from their employer to complete the application.
Okay.
So that that's one time. And then I I do understand the need to start employment. We we don't want to create a burden on employers who are interested in employing youth. And so I think one to two weeks is reasonable. I'll also say the way that this could be done is through technology. So currently, it is a paper-based system. You take a piece of paper from DCPS, either the high a high school or central office. You complete it, you go to your employer. We're talking about an electronic system. And I want to invite you and your team to take a look at, as an example, the state of Maryland and their electronic system, which I think works very well. And we'd have the ability to process this very quickly. But we're talking about getting rid of a a paper-based system that's currently in place.
All right, so I'm I'm my my son wants to go to work and he's told me. And so I'm now and the job is to start in two weeks. So with that notice as a parent, I will ask that he quickly apply for a work permit. All right, he will apply for the work permit. And so within two weeks of the application, will he have the work permit? Or is it that there are another couple of weeks that must transpire before you? before you can give him the work permit?
So I believe it's reasonable to be able to process a work permit within one to two weeks if all of the documentation needed is provided. If, if we don't have all of the documentation that's needed, then that could prolong the, the work permit. And there are items needed from the employer which would, uh, which are required for us to move forward. Now, not using a paper-based system and using technology, ideally, and I'm, I'm talking in concept here. I, I envision a system where potentially an employer could upload whatever it is that's needed. So then that way we would have access and could process it. But the idea is to make this very efficient.
All right, I, I hear you and I think we can work on what that timeline might look like as we are speaking with our, our young people.
I, I don't think it should take more than two weeks to get this done.
All right, if you hold on just one second. All right, well, we thank you very much, Dr. Hughes. We feel like we are on board with your testimony and thank you again.
Thank you. I'm going to head back to my board activity.
I know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Hall, we are now going to examine this proposed legislation from your perspective, if you don't mind. You've heard, everyone has been in, all of our testimony today has been opposed, opposed, opposed. It's primarily, we've had our unions, some of the larger unions to testify. I, my, my concern is, was there a clear understanding of what the law will do? This new opportunity, I'll call it, you know, I won't say a challenge, but this. What, what is your, your thinking as to how the law affects the union population in the city as they also are guided by their contractual arrangement? Derek, you're on now.
Okay. But I think that you are correct in that we need to ensure that people are aware of what they still have access to. And so it is a combination of leave options available to them, starting with the federal FMLA. So they have those 12 weeks that are, they have access to. Then you have, DC is very rich in benefits here with the DC FMLA, where there are now 16 weeks available to you. And then you have PFL, all of which would run concurrently. So that means that it is possible for someone to be out if they use all three of them, five or six months. And that's available to all employees.
All right, Mr. Hall, would you repeat that? I'm going to make the chart as you tell me.
Okay.
My rights.
Yes.
Leading up to five to six months cor- under current laws.
That's right.
Okay.
And under the change. So let me read again. So with FMLA, you'll get 12 weeks. You can get up to 12 weeks.
And that does not change.
That is not changing. That is the federal law will not change. DC government was very generous in then implementing the DC FML, which would give you an opportunity for 16 weeks. I do want to clarify that this 16 weeks, you could get 16 weeks for self and then 16 weeks for the care for someone else. Then on top of it currently, under PFL, you would get the eight weeks. When these run concurrently, you will actually utilize your PFL time first. So in the current instance, you would use those eight weeks. In the proposed instance, you would use the two weeks first, and then you would roll into your FML, FML and your DC FML time. But when you calculate those weeks, you could, if you use all of them together, be out for five or so months.
That is very important and I hope people are listening and understand what, how generous, how generous the residents and businesses of the District of Columbia are to the District of Columbia government workforce. I mean, that's what we're talking about. Here at the council, I'm aware of one or two people that have taken advantage of that process. And yes, their job was remained intact. Meanwhile, the workflow, I don't think we actually have overtime here, but the workflow was completed by others, I'm pretty sure. So that's, we're really talking about holding the job and getting the job done. You know, I think when we talk about, I tried to, when we were speaking about first responders, to understand that they have to use overtime or overtime is used to compensate when individuals are out. And I think we all can understand life and death kind of first responder duties. Maybe we don't understand the value of a customer service staffer in an office or incident that my office ran into the other day when we had someone a little unruly and a little, I, I guess a little bit had a little health problem, kicking the door down and stuff like that. People do that when they come to an office. Maybe those are not the best examples, but just wondered if you have received in your shop any comments from our workforce as to a concern about any changes that they've heard about their, their leave policy?
So I'm not aware of any outreach from employees to our office directly. I can definitely check back with staff to see if they've received anything, but-
Yes, that would be very helpful. The numbers that you have already shared with us are, are concerning. And I want to make sure that, that, that I understand what these patterns mean. Number of requests in FY25 from, let's say, the Department of Behavioral Health is 324. Let's take another agency, Metropolitan Police Department. Do you have, well, first I need to know, do you have or put on the record whether or not these are independent agencies outside of your purview? Or are they under your purview?
So the list that you have before you is a mixture. These are numbers that we were able to capture based on persons who are utilizing PeopleSoft that we have access to or that we could access the data of. But there's a mixture of independent and agencies under the mayor's personnel authority on that chart.
And so the use of PeopleSoft is by all of the agencies, independent and no, only?
Only some agencies. For instance, DCPS does not use PeopleSoft. OCFO does not use PeopleSoft, so we would not have access to their database to pull that information.
I see. But Metropolitan Police uses PeopleSoft?
Uh, I do, yes, they do.
All right. Okay, FIRE uses-
That's correct.
PeopleSoft. All right, I'm thinking of some of the agencies we heard from today, D-Dot.
Yes.
All right. I think those are some of the larger agencies that we have. They use PeopleSoft. So any data that you have provided from FY25 as it relates to PeopleSoft characteristics for those agencies are pretty much accurate. Am I correct?
Based on what has been entered into the system.
Okay, all right. Because the Department of Transportation, 342. All right. And of their, but for their, the utilization of family leave is 145 of that. Police department total of 823. And for family is 474. Are these numbers sort of the average over the last few years from, let's say, 23, 24, 25? Are these the average number of applications that you get from these agencies that I just pointed out? MPD, D-Dot. Okay, and Fire and Emergency Medical Services, a total of 509, of which 361 in FY25 were family leave requests.
Yep, so you're, each of the numbers that you have is based on the fiscal year. So FY25 and FY24. Any numbers or any information that predates PeopleSoft, we would not be able to provide those numbers because we didn't, we didn't have a way to track them.
So when did we implement PeopleSoft?
We implemented PeopleSoft and, give me one second, I'll find out. But we use PeopleSoft for this information as well as dashboards that we have that also track leave and FMLA, which are available to our agencies as well. And that is through MicroStrategy. So we started using PeopleSoft in February of 2023.
Okay, all right, so technically I can ask about FY24 and 25, correct? So two-year trend doesn't give us much of a trend. All right. I guess then I'm curious about how do we examine the issue of leave policy? The effects that it has on our government from agency to agency when we have so many agencies that are outside of your purview? Because they are not a part of the Department of Human Resources examination because they have their own personnel authority. I, I mean, and some of them are big and important agencies. MPD. Water and Sewer. I mean, you heard some of the labor leaders this morning speak about how important their personnel are. So my question is, does this make good sense that we have? Here you are talking to the council about a proposed change in the personnel authority process, but you can only speak about a part of the government even though it's titled under your auspices.
Yeah, so, so what I would say is, whether under the mayor's personnel authority or an independent agency, anyone who works for the government of the District of Columbia is valued and an asset. They're our greatest asset.
Oh, yes, definitely.
Whether they're under my purview or not, we understand that on a daily basis, they are serving the residents and the visitors of DC. And we applaud them for every effort that they do on a daily basis. While it is challenging for us under the structure to be able to provide that information to you, I think the answer to your question is that those agencies would have to, you would have to have conversations with those agencies on where they stand as it relates to their leave policies and how PFL is impacting them. Because we would not have access to that information, nor do we have the authority to sort of-
All right, and, 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 well said. And so when you talk about the dollar value of this report, which shows a total, I'll just go to the family group, 2,999 hours, what dollar value do you assign to that?
Yeah, so the current expense for PFL would be $20 million. If we were to-
So is that the parental and not the family? I'm looking at the chart of information you provided us.
The one with, yes, that is for family.
That's for family?
Yes, ma'am.
And how much is it again?
$20 million.
Okay, and for parental, which is only listed here as 677. Those are applications, correct? They do not give us the hours.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's the number of times that an application may have been submitted. I can get you the-
Hours.
I can get you that number. Since it's not changing in the legislation, that wasn't something that I have prepared, but I can get that for you.
All right, okay. And then for the grand total, which includes the 677 parental, which is not changing. It remains intact as is and it's not proposed to change. Is self-proposed to change?
Self is not proposed to-
All right, it is not proposed to change. And for self, you have 2,496 hours. So when we look at your document here, it shows a total of 6,172, of which nearly 50% is the family leave bracket. And what does the 6,172 represent in dollars?
Uh, I can get you that number as well.
All right. I would really, can we get that in?
Sure.
Okay.
I would say just to help give context, the, the current expense for family is 20 million. With the proposed legislation, it would reduce it to 8 million, just so that we'll have that.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
All right, and so I imagine that if we're counting hours, the 60, the 6,172 would bring us close to, I would say, a little shy of 40 million. You're going to get us the real number, but, and if it's 40 million with the changes, it would bring us, bring it down maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I-
Yeah, we would need your numbers, yes. Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for that. You've heard the arguments today. In the arguments, is it clear that our, now I should ask differently. As it relates to the union packages that you heard about today, on top of the hours, the, the months that you have identified, five to six months, is it fair to understand that the union members have additional hours through their contract?
So I'd be hesitant to speak on CBAs since OLR would be better suited to do that. I do think that what the union has vocalized, one is their legitimate concerns that they, one, need to make sure that persons have access to leave. Two, I would say that one of the comments related to someone who's just starting, someone who's just starting work would have a challenge in accessing FMLA because you have to have a certain amount of- because you have to have a certain amount of hours and have worked for a year before you can access FMLA. So they would not have those twelve weeks. They would not have access to that. So that's a legitimate concern.
So do we need to think about new employees and how we accommodate them? Or would they?
They, they would qualify under PFL, which, right now, um, you would have to work the one hundred and
Hundred and eighty days, correct?
Yes. At the moment, you come in and right away you have access to PFL. Um, and we have instances where someone gets the offer letter, starts work, and the very next day they take PFL. That doesn't help the agency, the government, or our residents.
I understand. And I believe your testimony pointed out that in the Metropolitan Washington area, some of the other, um, um, jurisdictional, um, governments, um, do not offer it at all.
They do not offer it the way that we do here in DC. So they will offer it for the care of a child, but not for caretaking, for caregiving.
All right.
That is not an option for them.
All right.
Um, yes, that's how we are different and we continue to be, um, generous and are offering for that.
Hold on just one minute.
Sure.
So Dr. Hall, is it fair to say that the approval for family leave, um, is currently is one where it tends to take a little longer than leave for self or parental leave?
Um, I would say that that is not fair to say.
Okay.
It is all based on ensuring that when an applica- application is submitted by the employee, that it's a complete application. It is then submitted to the FMLA coordinator in the agency, who would then review and approve or deny. They would deny it all for two reasons. One, um, it doesn't meet the eligibility standards for, uh, FMLA or PFL. Or it is incomplete, in which case they would send it back to the employee to request for the updated information.
So what constitutes an incomplete application? What's missing?
It could be a variety of things. It could be ensuring that, um, your doctor has included a clear indication of what the medical condition is. Um, having the, um, frequency. So, uh, FMLA could be intermittent or continuous. Your doctor may have forgotten to put that on the, the page. Uh, intermittent meaning you don't, you're not gonna take it every day. Um, you may have a occurrence, if you have asthma, you may get a flare-up once a month. That would be included on there. Um, those sorts of things, when they are not included, then we have to send it back to the employee. Um, and the employee then follows up with their medical professional to ensure that they have that information.
So what is your timeline for the time that you receive an application to, um, processing, provided everything is in place? And then what would be your timeline if things are not all in place? Um, and you would need to send it back to the agency? The agency would go to the employee? What, what?
Excellent question.
What's the real, what's the real deal here?
Yeah, excellent question. So, um, because it's a three-step process, um, the timeframe can go from ten days to thirty days when we have a complete packet. And that's because, again, it starts at the agency level with the employee and the FMLA coordinator. Then it comes to DCHR, and then DCHR has to transmit that information to OPRS, who uploads the PFL code and all that information in the system. What I can say to you as it relates to processing in DCHR specifically, in FY twenty-five, uh, we had about a three-day average processing time when we have a completed, um, packet. It's hard to determine the timeframe when a packet is incomplete because we don't know how long it would take for an employee to get the information from a doctor. Sometimes from some healthcare providers, it's a little bit more challenging to get the information from them, and so it extends the amount of time it takes for you to complete your packet.
Okay, I, I hear you. So what does an employee do if they have emergency surgery or death or in the family?
Yep, so, um, two distinct leave options. So if you have someone pass away in your family, you have bereavement time available to you. If you had to have emergency surgery, um, for yourself, you still have those three options we discussed earlier. So you'd still be able to have the option for, uh, PFL. FMLA is still available to you. Um, DC FML is available to you. The great thing about FML is that it can be backdated. So, you know, if, if it's an emergency, you don't have time to fill out the documentation that day. But you can get the documentation filled out and sent in to us, and we will actually retro it back to the day of your emergency. So that you have that leave time in place, and you also have the job protection that is offered through FML.
Would you repeat that again? I want those who may be listening to hear that because we've had some incidents reported into my office that didn't, didn't seem to know that what they could do.
Got you, sure. So, um, two different instances. If you have a loss in your family, you would take bereavement leave. If you were to have an emergency surgery, of course, you're unable to fill out the documentation that day. But after your surgery, days, hopefully not weeks, but days after, you'd be able to send in the information, the application for FML. It would be processed and we can backdate it to the date of your emergency to ensure that your leave covers the first day that you went out up until the time that your uh, medical provider says that you need to remain out. And we would be able to retrodate that application.
All right. Thank you for that. So today, your testimony is pretty much informing us that currently, using an employee, DC government employee, um, using DC FML has sixteen weeks.
You can get up to sixteen.
And the legislation before us does not change that.
No, ma'am.
The federal FMLA, which is also available and can be used concurrently, it allows twelve weeks.
That's correct.
And that does not change.
No, it does not.
So twelve and sixteen computes to seven months. Okay, and I believe you said that you can use DC FML or, what is it, four weeks, I'm sorry, four months for family member, four months parental. Am I correct?
Four months for care for someone else
Uh-huh.
or for self.
Self, I'm sorry, it's self. Those are the two, okay. So that could be an additional four months. I'm already at seven months. So I can add four more.
If you have a
Seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. I only have to work one month.
Yes, I would make sure that we are very clear, as the union, uh, representatives did, that the, the difference is with paid leave, you are getting money from the government to cover your leave time. With FML or DC FML, you are using your, your leave time that you've accrued in order to cover your time out to ensure that you're paid. I would say, not every employer offers you to use FMLA and be paid. So that's another thing I think we need to highlight about what the district government does. There are some employers that require you to take FML, and they don't give you an option to utilize your leave to be paid. The government is very gracious in doing that. Also, I would flag that, um, as it relates to ta- leave accrual, that employees, as they're accruing leave, they can roll over up to two hundred and forty hours. So i- it's not like you're starting fresh each year. Um, and you're accruing time throughout the year in addition to the time that you've, uh, rolled over. So those things can contribute to ensuring that you have sufficient hours to cover the time that you're out. Um, and then one final thing I would add, just by way of other benefit options that are available to employees, is that the district also offers short-term and long-term disability. So if someone was out on their, uh, due to their own medical condition, it is possible that they would be able to tap into short-term and long-term disability as well.
And what does, um, the short-term disability provide for an employee?
Yep, so it'll, it'll provide, um, pay coverage up to, I believe it's sixty percent, don't
Okay, so it's a percentage
There's a percentage of your salary that will
Okay, your salary.
Um, while you are out.
And long-term?
And long-term disability, same thing. It will do a
Okay.
a percentage of your salary.
All right, and long-term is for more than three months or?
Long-term is, um, let me get back to you on that.
Okay.
But I can definitely get you that information.
I, I'm just really trying to make it as clear as possible that if you, um, and quite honestly, I think I can say this, for all of us residents and businesses that are the taxpayers in the District of Columbia, if you are lucky enough to be a DC government employee, we have a number of options available to you. One, to keep you employed, keep you healthy, um, and to, to the best of our ability, um, and make it a great experience. What we are most concerned with as a government now is the fact that the land of milk and honey is not as, as, um, refreshing as it once was. We're in a cadundrum, and we have to accept the situation for what it is. And that is that the loss of employees that must make use of leave um, is creating a very difficult, uh, work opportunity in our city. In other words, um, if you take seven months or eleven months um, off from your job, we, we want you to be comfortable, but meanwhile, we don't have the capacity to to compensate for that loss with individuals who overtime, if that were possible. Or to compensate with it by a reduction in um, the services that we can provide. It's, that's what I think I'm hearing from you.
That's correct. There, there will be a, um, there'll be a trade-off that while persons are out, as, as you pointed out, while someone was out in your office, other persons had to sort of pick up the slack and do the work. Um, which is, you know, I think that all of us who are in public service understand that and we do what we have to do. Additionally, I would add that there are also instances where that's the case, and, um, and I think one of the persons who testified today, where an, employees may rally together, and they might, um, let you borrow some of their leave time. So there are trade-offs, um, but I think that the district is very rich in the offerings that it provides. Um, when I had to be a caregiver for my grandfather and my two parents in Maryland, there was no Maryland FMLA. There was no PFL at all. So when the twelve weeks ran out, um, of course, I had to make a difficult decision. So I empathize with people who have to do that.
Yes, of course. I, I appreciate that. Thank you for putting that on the record. And I guess, um, from a management perspective and oversight of, by this committee, I am very concerned that you cannot, um, account for the leave policies and, um, examples that, um, are occurring in the independent agencies, which would add to this so-called trough.
That's correct.
You know, you talked about, um, realizing a portion of twenty million dollars. Um, it could could be much, much more than that.
It's definitely much more than that when you consider that twenty million does not include DCPS.
Yeah. Exactly. And we heard from the teachers' union that, uh, they are guaranteed twelve days. But do they get to take advantage of the, well, only if they have accrued leave?
That's correct.
So for them, the PFL is, is very important because twelve days, and we're talking weeks and months for the rest of folk.
Yeah, I would, I'm not the, um, subject matter expert on DCPS or their, um, contract, but it is possible if their time rolls over, then they're accruing more leave days, um, as they go, and they may be able to use those as well, but that would definitely be a discussion.
That, you, you, you are correct. That is the, that is the process. Um, so thank you. Thank you very much, um, today. Um, really appreciate it, and, um, again, thanks to Dr. Maurice Hughes, and special thanks to you, um, Dr. Hall, um, for the time you spent with us today, and, um, I think that there should be a movement to put, um, all of our personnel in one location, so that we can have accuracy of information. Um, I don't relish the idea of having to talk to fifteen additional agencies in order to get a clear picture of what goes on with our human resources element, which is, you know, primarily in my, my committee. Um, so thank you very much for that. As a reminder, additional testimony may be submitted for the record through the council's hearing management system or by emailing it to the committee at seal@dc council dot gov, and that's C-E-A-L. Again, the record will close, um, in ten business days. That is Thursday, December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five at five PM. The next meeting of the Committee on Executive Administration and Labor is a public hearing, which will be held tomorrow at ten AM in room five hundred and by Zoom. We will be reviewing two bills, um, the first being the Fair Initiatives Lend Transparency to Every Resident Amendment Act of twenty-twenty-five, followed by the Board of Elections Certification of A and C Vacancies Amendment Act of twenty-twenty-five. And so with the time being, um, one fifty, looks like one fifty-seven, um, PM, same day in which we started, December fourth, this meeting is adjourned, and thank you again.